Okay. Hello Kingsbury, this is your March meeting.
Alright, now that we are here and the train finally moved. Well, go ahead and.
I beat the back end of it.
There you go. We'll do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Man, Texas, that Texas pledge of allegiance likes to come in there and play with the American ones, like very Texan of it, isn't it?
I can understand for sure, but what deity were you speaking to?
I just like, I always like get to that point where they're very similar and then I start to go down the Texas pledge lines.
Yeah.
I'm getting to where the Tex pledge comes right after the pledge, American pledge, wherever I am.
Yeah.
We finish and I'm like, alright, well, come on y'all.
Aren't you from Texas?
I was though up here, but we didn't say the Texas pledge when I was a kid.
Never till I got here.
I know.
Yeah.
Never till I got here.
Yeah, I always think it's weird when it's like. What is it, uh, I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
Oh, yeah.
It is, it's a little awkward.
Didn't you do that in grade school?
I don't think we did.
I grew up in Arizona and, uh, we did the United States flag, but my kids in the eighties, they did the Texas, uh.
Really?
The Texas in Arizona?
Uh, no, no.
Well, that must be a Texas thing, cause we didn't do it in Florida in the eighties.
Well, I didn't do it in Waco.
I didn't do it in Texas.
I didn't do it.
Oh, maybe it's just Kingsbury. Maybe it's just us. Proud to say the pledge to Texas now.
There you go. Alright, we'll have a roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Commissioner Ignashev.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Nolan.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Um, let's see, I'll save that for that, so any announcements? Um, trying to think if I have anything that's not already on the agenda, I don't believe I do.
We have an announcement.
Okay.
Um, I haven't, but well, we created up a big show at the McNay Art Museum, which is open now until June. And, um, they are very welcoming to us and I know we've taken a group from Kingsbury before, so, um, if people are interested in seeing the show, I can reach out to the education organizer and we could probably get free tickets, so, um.
That's cool.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could do a little field trip if people wanna go up to the McNay.
That's been a hundred years since I've been to the McNay.
Should we post it somewhere? I mean, I don't know, how do we?
Put it on Facebook.
Yeah, well, I'm not on Facebook.
Oh, we can post it on Facebook.
Alright, let's post it, yeah, and then, uh, I'll find out how many people and I can call them up and they'll, they'll get, get us in for free.
So, till when is it?
Uh, it's open till June.
And the show is?
It's, uh, called Michael Tracy, um, and he, uh, was a Texas artist who made a bunch of work down on the border in San Ignacio. Beautiful, beautiful work and, uh, they have a whole big exhibit there. So, we can see that and then there's a bunch of other stuff up too, there's Sporting Spectators, the other show, so, for people who are into sports.
What kind of art does this Tracy guy do?
It's.
A wheel painting or sculpture?
Uh, it's paintings and sculptures.
Oh, really?
Um, yeah, these big, thick, beautiful colored, like panel paintings that are multi-panel and really just gorgeous color-wise and, uh, abstract and then, um, and then bronze sculptures with some figurative elements, but also kind of abstract and, uh, very influenced by his, uh, the Catholic religion. I think there's a lot of kind of heavy reliquary kind of references and, um. Huh?
Roman Catholic.
Roman Catholic, yes, yeah, yeah, but, um, yeah, and also super bright colors and, I mean, it's a beautiful show, it's a really beautiful show. So, people wanna go, let us know.
Um.
It's up till June.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we can go in April.
I know that, um, uh, Robin Cresta is having an Easter market.
Yes, that's right.
Um, I don't, did she do that? Oh, okay.
Uh, Christine brought this to me earlier today.
I don't know if it's gonna be like a road closure, they're gonna do it right in front, but, okay.
Yeah, um, Christine said that, um, she was talking to Robin about it and, um, it was kind of like, you should go ahead and ask for this in case, you know, like, um, that's, that's what I got from that conversation.
Yeah, it's gonna be on the street, it's not gonna be in the hall, it's gonna be in the street in front of the hall. Uh, but depending on how many vendors, you know.
I mean, cause you could do it on the boardwalk, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, okay, so, that's gonna be April fifth, I believe, yeah.
What day of the week is?
I think it's a.
I'm sorry. I have one of those fancy calendar things, I'm not, I'm.
People forget it's Saturday.
Saturday.
And before Easter.
Sorry.
That's okay. What all the, what all are they gonna do, do you know? What kind of a?
Um, I think, I got an email about it, I think it's vendors, you know, similar to the Christmas market, like people selling stuff.
Yeah. Christmas market.
Okay.
I mean, at that one, they had all kinds of, you went, I saw you there, didn't you?
I don't know, maybe.
They had, uh, like a woman making really cute crocheted stuffed animals and there was like handicraft stuff and, you know, Robin's stuff is really beautiful.
Ooh.
Great.
That's during the day or in the evening?
Uh, that one was in the evening, but I think this one is ten to four, so this one's during the day.
I remember that, I am. Okay, okay.
And I think they're planning on having an Easter bunny or something.
Ooh.
Yeah, whether it's a person in a bunny outfit or a bunny in a bunny outfit, not sure, but.
Do we have the other one on the agenda, the other road closure?
Um, the chili cook-off?
Uh-huh.
Uh, I didn't get a form from them, um, but.
You didn't get one?
I thought, didn't we already go with another chili cook-off?
I was thinking there was one, I thought that's what we updated the form for that.
Well, yeah, but, uh.
Did we, we didn't get that last month, did we? Am I getting my?
I think we got, didn't we get, I remember something last month or the month before about the chili cook-off, didn't we already approve it?
I think I saw something.
Well, I know last month it's the, the.
We, maybe we did.
Or is that another chili cook-off?
Maybe we did.
Yeah, file closes, street closures or?
I'm sorry that I am not remembering.
Um, I remember last month you talked about it Shirley, but didn't
Um, oh, okay.
have it yet, cause I supposed to.
Okay.
Cause they, I feel like they already got approved, cause I, I've just, unless there was, did they, did they do another one recently?
Well, there's. Uh.
When, when did you update the?
Cause I think we already, didn't we look at something?
It's an annual thing.
Yeah, now we don't have it, we didn't have it last month, okay.
Did anybody notice?
When did you update the road closure, road closure form, street closure?
Well, I mean, I brought in that copy of it last month, uh, for y'all to look at, but I, um.
I already read an email.
What?
I already read an email.
Yeah, I emailed y'all about it too, I, I think, I think that I, I brought it to the last meeting to look at and then I think that we emailed about it, like I think I sent it in an email and then I know I heard from you
Right. Yeah.
in the email, but honestly, I haven't really done anything with it since I updated it.
Well, okay.
But I also haven't heard from anybody about the chili cook-off, so I guess I was kind of hoping that
Yeah, that's what, do we have money?
they were in touch with one of you or something.
We don't have the application on our website, right?
Not yet.
Okay, but there we go to the store.
I'm, I'm wondering if they had turned it in?
I feel like they did, I feel like we already approved it, I mean, I feel like we talked about chili cook-off recently.
I was just.
No, it's not. Well, I think we just talked about it, so, and we talked about the form.
Oh, okay. When is it, in April?
April twelfth, I think.
Oh, so they need to have.
Is that right? Something like that? I believe it's something like April twelfth, um.
They might not need the road closed off, they have the field and they have now the, I mean, they have the.
If they don't wanna close the road, I guess.
Well, I mean, last year they, they closed some road, right?
Yeah, because they have on both sides.
Yeah, but they, they filled that place up.
Well, we don't have it on the agenda, so we can't really vote on it, so, um, if
Okay.
it turns out that there was one turned in at the store, then, you know, and we really, you know, for the safety of the, of the, um, attendees, we would need to make sure we have a road closure, so. But we now and then, maybe, you know, we have like a emergency session and, and do some, and do that, because we can't, can't do it this, we can't vote on it.
And maybe do it on the message, yeah.
It is Saturday, April twelfth.
April twelfth, okay.
Well, is anyone contacting them or, and ask them if they had, if they're planning on closing it?
Uh. Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to contact them, see.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it worth looking back through the minutes and seeing?
I, I looked at last month's minutes and we did not.
I wonder if it was a couple months ago, anyway.
Oh, it's the fire department. Does anybody here have a phone number for them? Could I go call them right now? Is that crazy?
No, it's not, I don't think it is, well, I don't know, I have no idea.
Um, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't have a number.
That's fine, that's.
I can't do that with my phone, I already know it. Uh, be on Facebook, what happened, was happening in Kingsbury, I'm sure they posted on that.
Well, yes, but that, whether they got the road closure or not is.
No, I know, but I was, I was gonna call them and ask them, I'm sure there's a phone, I think there's a phone number on most of their stuff, but I don't even.
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
I don't know, I mean, we can't, we can't do anything about it tonight anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
Okay, alright.
Um, whether, if they did, we've probably approved it, if they didn't, we have nothing to approve.
I mean, we didn't, there wasn't, we, we didn't have that form at the meeting.
Okay, okay, I mean, if we have to do that, just to make sure that people are safe, you know, we could call, you know,
Just a quick meeting. a ten-minute, a, a session in order to do that.
Yeah, for sure.
No problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, um, item number two, public comments or discussion, anything, yes, sir?
Did anybody notice the woman, uh, walking from coast to coast with the?
Yes.
What?
Yes, uh, minimal awareness, if I understood right.
I'm not sure what she was, was, what her.
Was she going down ninety?
She was, she came through Kingsbury.
Did you guys say hi?
Yep, well, she stopped by the store, I didn't see her, I didn't see her.
I don't know.
Charlie talked to her and she asked about something great, so she was going to the store.
Yes, she came to the store and she's walking across the United States.
Uh, from Los Angeles and.
Very cool.
Schuylburn was her next, uh.
Yeah.
Going east? Yes. Going east. Yes, yeah, from Los Angeles to the other coast and Schuylburn was her next place to stop.
Wow. Yep.
Hey, Panning Church is over there, I don't know anything else about Schuylburn, no, but I don't.
That's cool.
Uh, she originally is from Australia, uh, but she's been a US citizen, she has a, you know, her children's lawyer, very interesting.
Yeah, I just heard that it was a woman walking across the United States, said she stopped in Kingsbury, so, I don't know, I didn't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Although three of them didn't, cause it has some campers here.
And what is, why is she walking, why is she?
She said for, for.
Mental health awareness, I believe, is, that's what her t-shirt.
Okay.
Christine, did you get anything else, or, I don't know, who's working that day, so?
No, no, I didn't, yeah, she did not tell me anything more than there was this woman stopped by that was walking across, so I don't know.
Uh, she mentioned a web address or, you know, and, uh, sorry, I don't go into the web at all.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't blame you, I wish I didn't have to, it's a terrible place, should never go there.
Very pleasant.
Yeah, nice.
Ah, exciting, yay people.
Any other public comments or discussions?
Kingsbury Baptist, they built a new building, yeah, they have a big flap up behind the other, right?
Wow.
Behind that other building, they recently put up and it is an expansion of the mission, the ministry of.
Oh, good, that's cool, yeah.
Like the thrift shop and everything?
Furniture, clothes, food, huh?
Yeah.
The thrift shop and everything?
Thrift shop and.
Yes, thrift, yeah, thanks, because the donations have been outrageous.
Food bank, right.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's packed.
What is with not raised?
Donations, I, uh, you build a building and it's already full, you build.
Yeah.
Wow, that's cool.
Mm-hmm.
Are you smiling, donated building?
Well, the first one was, but I don't know who, but, but the second one was, I guess I should say.
Yeah.
Any, any further public comments, anything else happen? Are you trying to think?
Oh, we're going too fast, I can't, can't stop him in the right here.
Okay. Alright, I almost missed.
Public comments, thank you for being so patient with me.
Alright, item number three, review of public documents, area resident, residents needing help with ETJ annexation or other paperwork. Um, I, uh, got a call, uh, from a gentleman the other day and he is work, was working with the, uh, pre-development committee in Sagan and they were telling him that our ETJ had changed and our city limits had changed and I said, no, sir, they have, have not, not in some time. And he, and then, uh, he said, well, he was gonna get back with them and I gave him, you know, whatever information I had. Called back today and he was talking, um, with actually, um, the, I guess, fire marshal. And this is a place on eleven oh four, um, on the other side of ten, just on the other side of ten, it's nineteen acres. It's half in Kingsbury city limits, half in Kingsbury ETJ. And the county fire marshal suggests, he says, the first time he suggested it, he suggested that they, uh, annex the whole property. Otherwise, they would have to fall into the county codes of having thirty thousand dollars for a, a fire hydrant and, you know, uh, all these, uh, regulations that the county would have on.
For the ETJ part?
Yes.
So that he was suggesting that he, he annex into us?
Yes.
Cause the county thinks they govern the, the ETJ and we govern just, you know.
ETJ?
Well, that's because of what we've been talking about with the contract, yeah, so we should.
Yeah, so, uh, so he, yeah, we don't have any, any say over, uh, fire, yeah, in, in our ETJ.
Is he putting a development in there or just?
So. No, it sounds like it's a, like a commercial, something commercial. They have a tiny home on it, he said, right now.
And they wanna make him do fire hydrants, huh?
Yeah, yeah, um.
Oh, I've seen that place, there's one, it's a clear drop, it's just a flat, yeah, they're doing, doing something, we don't know what though.
Yeah. Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't get into those specifics, so I gave him the information to, on the website where he could download a petition for annexation.
I didn't know we came over that far, but.
Yeah, we go, we go down I-ten, um, on both sides.
Ten.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And so.
Sweet.
Yeah, so, uh, I gave him the information on the website, how to download a petition for annexation. Um, they're up in Arlington, gave him the PO box for that and said, then we, we, there's a particular process we have to do with legal notices and public meeting, public hearings and, and he said, so I should just wait to hear back from you and I said, yes. So as soon as we get it, we can start acting on it.
He's filed petition then, he has?
He, but he's gonna mail it.
Okay.
So, um, as soon as we get it, we can start the, start the process.
Very nice.
And, um, so, uh, uh, so we got that, got that going, I haven't had any other requests. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have to brush up on what the current, uh, requirements are, because it's been a year or two, I guess.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've been there for a while.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I think the, you know, prior, we had to have two public hearings, the last time we've had to do it, we only had to have one public hearing, so.
One, thought that we had one here and one there, onsite.
That's what it was originally, but then the, but then it's changed to where the, you only need the one public hearing, but I think you still need the legal notice and paper and all that, so, so.
No, we didn't have to do the onsite one last time. Yeah, yeah.
So, I let him know if, if it all, if all the, uh, dominoes fall, you know, just right, that we should be able to get it
Much.
by the third Monday of next month and then I would, or Jessica would, could then mail him back the ordinance thing, but. Alright, item number four, old business consent agenda item, uh, the only item here is the approval of the February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular commission meeting minutes. Any, uh, reason why that should be moved to the regular agenda? Alright, hearing no reason, those will stand approved. Item number five, discuss and consider real estate acquisition, next steps, um. I, I will tell you what steps we have currently, this is course for seventy-five seventy-one Kingsbury Road. Um, I got the, uh, GB, I got with GVC about the meter. Um, the one meter, cause there's two meters on the property, the meter on Kingsbury Road, not on Prairie Road, um, there's one. Um, and there's a, so that was not a, uh, no, no big deal, um, it's a fifty dollar charge that will be applied to the next, to our, our first bill and I got our first bill the other day, or I got a notice about our first bill, uh, uh, and it's, uh, our first bill is gonna be seventy-four dollars, so that should include the fifty dollar, uh, transfer, yeah, transfer fee on that. Um, I also got with Crystal Clear, um, and.
Yeah, we'll get that for another month. It's probably two months behind is how they are in the building, when I called, I'm sorry for that.
Yeah. Um, and did the transfer that, then I got a call back and that's a four hundred dollar, uh, fee for a transfer on that, well, it's not the fee for a new meter, you know, which is what, fifteen hundred dollars?
Right, yeah, that's true.
Um, I did get a call back from that and they, it seemed like they thought that the right paperwork hadn't been given to me, um, at the office when I, when I did the transfer. Um, but I haven't heard that and I, and I said, well, what, why don't we wait for the person that knows for sure? And I never got contacted again on that, but we were just talking that that four hundred dollar check, I wrote it on February twenty-seventh, that has not gone through yet. So, I'm probably need to go ahead and contact them again and see if.
Hopefully the person who knows.
How to do it, what the right paperwork is, um, uh, will do that.
Have to do it all, do it all on phone.
Really?
Um, as far as phone, uh, Dennis is moving the phone, the one phone line to the back, there's.
Well, it was on the back, it was on, but moved it all the way to the corner.
To the back, so.
His electric meter also has been moved all the way to the corner and I got the final bill as far as the front meter and the.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've got so many, it's computer city and you get.
Yeah, so. It won't have a, there, they won't have a, a phone, uh, currently, um, we can see about doing that or doing a voip phone or not having a phone or, you know, we, we talked about it, but I don't think anybody came to any real, had a real strong opinion, um, on that yet.
Well, I expressed a strong opinion, cheap.
Cheap.
Well, you have a landline, Shirley, don't you, at the store?
Yeah, the store, we have a lot of.
It's not even possible, cause it feels like a landline.
Because they came with one, that's all I know.
Yeah, I know, Shirley, it would do that anymore.
Well, uh, cause I have DSL and, and the phone line and, yeah, it's, well, and I have a phone for, uh, both buildings and DSL in both buildings and it's like a hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Not cheap.
No, no, uh, but that's for internet and phone for two buildings, so, if you cut it in half, yeah, a hundred and.
Okay. Do you get a, a phone when you do fiber? Or is it different?
They don't, GBTC does not have fiber down in that area at this point. They say that they will have something like by the end of the year according to, um, uh, rounds of mine in the same area and, but I don't know if that's actually gonna come through fruition, GBTC.
GTC?
Yeah, GBEC is better.
They say they have fiber.
The GVEC doesn't do landlines.
They don't do landlines, but we have GBTC for years and just, we could never get decent signal with the internet.
Correct. Right, right, uh, that, well, they're.
But it did have a landline.
Right, but their max is thirteen, with DC, DSL, their max is thirteen.
I know. The TCA.
Um, with GBEC, with fiber, you get what we're getting here, which is two fifty, so, um, and we.
What's the speed on GBTC, the DSL?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen?
Thirteen versus two fifty.
That's, that's what I got, but I, I didn't realize it was.
Right.
It's, yeah, we had it for years, you couldn't get two people on the computer, as soon as somebody else jumped on the computer, you could see it slowing down, it's like.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Shirley, I did not say, uh, I did get a dumpster, it came, it was there Friday, Saturday, it changed, but Friday it came.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it's big with now, yes, people are welcome, household trash, household trash only. Depending on how the money goes and how it, it'll be weekly, but with the smaller dumpster, there weren't there now. It's at the, the paved driveway, in the pavement, so.
Okay, so you're, this is for off, yeah, you're offering this to?
People that live right here, city residents and the.
Well, I mean, nobody's gonna police that.
Household, household only.
I just, yes, household only.
No spare tires, no paint, gasoline.
Tires, tires, you pay extra.
You do?
Mattresses, you have, but that's not household, household is your daily garbage and yes, I realize people go crazy in buying stuff and throwing it away. I've already had one person do such, I mean, come on, really, anyway. They even throw washer, uh, talking to the guy that delivered it, washing dryers, not a problem, tires, extra charge, mattresses, like. Anyway, doesn't make any sense, but that's.
Okay, well, um, we'll see how that works out. Good luck.
Unfortunately, it's online, not just talking person to person.
I know. You say from San Antonio, bringing a load of tires, it's not.
No, I guess, and if I have to be like Sagan and, and you show me your address, uh, because it's on the.
Roofing tiles.
Oh, there's a security camera on, on location too, license plate and everything, what you're going in, we'll catch you, we'll see you.
Thank you, Frank.
So, are you, are you moved out of the house at this point? Okay. Yeah, Jessica and I had gone by and, uh, Dennis, I believe, had talked to you about staying in there, cause it was during that cold weather and we didn't know that, so we're about to walk in on him. Uh, however, we did verify that the key does work and we know now which door the key goes into, um, and I'm going to get some keys made, um, so that I'm not the only person with the, the key, so.
The only one.
I put it under a rock out there by the door.
Yeah, yeah.
And don't tell anybody.
Yeah.
Don't say that.
Wind's rock.
So.
It could be any rock out there, if you don't mind stacking there by the gate.
So, I, I have again contacted, uh, TML about insurance and still, uh, I'm still missing and I called again today about insurance, so I need to get that taken care of, so I will continue to try and reach out and see about getting the insurance for that and then I have not contacted anyone yet on the leveling.
Okay.
We have to issue an RFP, don't we?
No.
No.
No, okay.
Uh, up to fifty thousand is not a, an RFP is not required, uh, so, the, a leveling could be ten, fifteen K.
Yeah.
It could be five dollars, we don't know, we're gonna get like as many estimates as we can.
Could be five.
Some nice soul.
I watch Steven videos on do-it-yourself leveling. But, uh, yeah, it, uh, yeah, it's not gonna take fifty thousand, so we should be okay with that.
I have one question about the insurance.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We own the property, is it, it's not automatically covered by our insurance? Or it's had to be specifically listed?
No, no, it's not, well, because our insurance pre-existing was, um, covering, uh, this rent, uh, rental, uh, or lease here, but that's the only property that the city had, so the policy does not specifically include that property.
Right.
Okay.
It's not insured until we.
So, no, no city property is specifically included, unless it has to be, if we acquire more real estate, it has to be.
Well, I think they.
Not, not any property that we own.
No, if, I'm saying if we require some, acquire something, uh, machinery, real estate, uh, and it becomes a property of the city, it's not automatically covered under our policy at all.
No, I, I mean, that's not how it works with our insurance at least.
Well, if we, if we went out, for instance, and bought, uh, a Ford F-150 pickup for utilities or, or something,
They wanna know.
Yes. we would have to list that.
It has to be added, okay, right, so we can't really do too much until we are covered, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably not, probably not, we just make sure.
Yeah.
Are you not covered as with the city, uh, we, yeah, I'll check, we checked in before as far as the events?
I mean, we're insured.
The, the city.
Right, but we're not insured for.
Right, I understand, but the right on, that once you notify them, it is their obligation unless you delay in notifying to go ahead and carry you, but you have to catch up with actually getting things done, with almost any insurance.
Yeah.
Well, for clarification, if the property.
Well, for clarification, if the property is not covered, but, uh, as it is, but if, if you wanna undertake some work. And we have working out there, working, I, and something happened, I think our existing liability policy.
That's what I'm looking for.
Would cover, so we can go ahead and start construction and working on it, but what we need is to list it only if, if there's a fire.
Yeah.
Or wind that blows it down, it wouldn't be covered until.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, no, my concern was having somebody underneath that house, doing an estimate or actually leveling the foundation.
Is liability, yes, sir. I, I think anything we undertake, uh, that's on city property, even if we haven't listed it on the policy. It is a liability of the city and it is covered by that liability policy.
The liability policy.
I hate, I hate to put more on your plate, but can we verify that we, that'll happen, not we think it is covered?
Well, yes, but we just need to talk to the same people.
Same people that are calling back anyway, okay.
Yeah.
But we need to ask them, clarify that.
Yeah. All right. Okay, though, cause yeah, I'd like to get somebody underneath the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now, leveling, uh, estimates, I got at least one company I really would make, like to make sure that they get offered the opportunity to bid.
Leveling. Awesome, contact them, send them some information.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
This is for the leveling?
Leveling.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've, we've pretty much said that's job one, is, is getting leveling, and then, and then roof.
Yeah. We might know somebody to roof if, if needing.
And the more, I mean, the more bids we got, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think next steps, I gotta just hook up with, uh, T M L on insurance, and then we'll get some more, more bids on leveling.
All right, I'll start contacting a few people.
Awesome, cool.
Refer them to our.
Yay! And then we can, I mean, and then it really kinda comes down to, and I, I gotta get keys made. Keys, I'm gonna put keys on here, I was hoping to do that this afternoon, and I got caught up in a, in a, uh, workshop that I'm in, so. Um, didn't get, uh, keys made, but, uh, we'll get some keys made and, and, uh, get. Um, what about the, there's a number of items on the front porch, is that items?
Done, you're done, everything.
Okay.
Uh, and I started trying to say that I am still utilizing the back porch.
Okay.
Because peanut is, and the adjustment is.
Right, right. Okay. There's still a tenant.
I'm tired of sleeping in that chair.
Okay, all right. Um.
It's okay.
Are we, are we okay to go in and?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, just long as we don't let peanut.
You don't know how, not there forever.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, God, he's not an issue.
Yeah.
If the doors have locks, well, we have keys, I'm gonna say, make sure they're locked if you're taking a shower.
Yeah.
There's no shower.
All right, so I mean, we've got a couple of things to do before we really kinda go in and, and start doing some, you know, I mean, there's.
We probably have to have another shower. Plenty to do.
There's plenty, plenty that we can, that we can do and some to sa- I mean, yeah.
There are some other items in the house that, I, I'm not having a garage sale or a yard sale or anything, it's the city's.
Okay, all right.
Hey.
All right, so, yeah, we got a couple of things that we need to get checked before we do. Go too far down that road. Um, item number six, discuss and consider Fall Harvest Festival.
Yeah, so, um, you know, as we, I hope everybody's aware, Habitable Spaces has been running Fall Harvest for the past thirteen years, I think.
Twelve years with thirteen.
Um, uh, and we have a new business, and we are way too busy, and we just do not have the bandwidth for running it. I don't know if we've ever really run it that well anyway, I mean, maybe somebody can run it better. But, um, yeah, we are thrown in the towel and can't, well, handing the towel to someone else, we wanna still do an art thing there, but we wanna be not the organizer. So, um, putting it out there, I know that Robin does stuff, there's a bunch of people that do stuff in downtown, and I think there's plenty of talent who can take over. Uh, the marketplace, um, Shane came today to talk, since I'm the city commissioner, maybe he could, do you feel like, pretty being put on the spot, talking about it?
Yeah, so, uh, like Alice mentioned, you know, we did host it for thirteen festivals, it was in twelve years, cause we had two one year, and we changed the timing of it. But, um, you know, it was really timely at the time, and, uh, when we first started, there was nothing going on downtown, and we had no special permission. We didn't even know who owned those buildings, even Shirley.
I didn't know.
Didn't know who owned those buildings, like, people were still, except for Johnny Harbith, uh, and that family, we did know who owned, and, and Johnny did, uh, agree, you know, sanction that part of the, the downtown. But, yeah, we did start it with, with, you know, with nothing really, and, uh, the, the goal really was to, well, to bring the community together, create a festival, and then to, um, activate downtown. Which wasn't really being used very much at all at that time, um, other than Johnny's, uh, you know, antique shop and a couple of things, where there wasn't really much going on, like, as a festival wise.
Yeah, the bar was on and off.
Yeah, there was, the railway was still there at the time, and, um.
Yeah, the different names it's been under.
Yeah, there's three, three different ones, but, um, we just feel like, you know, it's been great and everything, um, you know, maybe, maybe now we need more input from citizens and, and maybe people didn't realize. You know, to what extent we were running it and what the city did and, you know, the different things like that. But anyway, I, I think it's open to, it could be the ci- you know, it could be the, the city, it could be the churches come together and make an organization, it could be different groups, like people like Rob, I don't know, you know, it could be, um, a joint effort. Um, and like I said, I, Habitable Spaces would love to continue to be a part of it, uh, we just don't wanna, uh, host it anymore, and, um, we, we have other things that we're trying to do. And, um, it's, it's been a great, it's been a great fit at the time.
It, it, it's a real, it's a lot of work, I know it's hard work.
It is, and it's not, you know, it's congruent enough with our mission, but it's not, you know, we're trying to still fulfill a lot of the things that we, um, set out to do. And, but more art stuff, and, you know, it's, it's hard to run it, and we can't, it's, we can't run it and do that other thing.
Yeah, we can do the art portion of it as much.
Yeah.
And so, but, you know, I, I, but we're looking at this as a success, I mean, not as like a failure or anything that we're passing on, but it's just, it's beca- and it's also become kind of a bigger thing, and it is kind of beyond just our organization to run it, I think, too.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Uh, but yeah, I think we've seen it as a success, a good thing to, to pass on, and, um, just to be clear about some things, you know, um, by design, we did it. It was never, it was never a fundraiser for Habable Spaces, so it was never, never a moneymaker, it was never set up to be a moneymaker. That said, on quite the contrary, it was, like, Habable Spaces would write grants and, and get, not every year, but sometimes would get grants and stuff to bring in.
Usually.
Um, usually, so we could, um, you know, pay some nonprofits to do something, or like the time we had the welder there, we actually gave, gave him a little stipend, cause he's, you know, he's an artist. And, uh, the guy who did the blacksmithing and stuff, a lot of times, some, sometimes we would populate some of those and get artists and artisans, and, um, you know, give them stipends and stuff. Um, get, get, you know, musical acts, and, and wherever we get more bu- booth fees, we would put it into better acts or getting more acts, is kind of always the, the model that we were on. Um, the only time Alice and I ever made any money personally is by running our own booth, uh, separate from running the festival, doing food and stuff. Um, so if there's a better model out there, figure it out, that's awesome, um, you know, um, we thought the thirty-five dollars seemed low enough and was, you know, it's not cheap, but it, it did kinda help us cover the porta potties, the. Um, bands, equipment rental and different stuff we needed, over the years, you know, a lot of people have started donating that stuff, Shirley's taken a big step up and donating a lot of that stuff too. Um, anyway, um.
The City of Kingsbury pays for some.
Yeah, the City of Kingsbury, this donation has gotten more and more as time's gone.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship, sorry. But anyway, I think it's just time to, to pass it on, and I don't know to who, but I'm totally willing to whatever organization or group or.
Or person.
Persons, uh, want to continue, I'm totally happy to divest everything to you and explain everything that we did. And, um, help you troubleshoot maybe things that you, you know, that you can perceive, but I still, we still wanna be a part of it, we just don't wanna run it anymore.
Okay.
And, um, yeah.
Well, thank y'all very much for doing it.
Yes, yes.
All these years.
Fun time.
I mean, we had to remember that, yeah, when you started this, there was.
It was.
We were incorporated.
It was, well, there was nothing, yeah, we weren't incorporated, there was nothing happening downtown, it was just, you know.
Actually, I wanna say something else too, that, um, when we were incorporating, one of the things our, uh, Matita Devara told us was, you need to have a city event. And we're like, oh, we already have one, so we, we were kind of one step ahead of a lot of other incorporating ci- uh, cities or townships or whatever, at that time, we were, we already had.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
A thing that was a community thing, that kind of was our spice of Texas, you know, where, whatever, our, kind of way of doing things, so.
Mm-hmm.
Our spice of Texas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, that was, it's been a good thing.
Well, well, I think we'll need to get. Some input in the next weeks and months, I mean, what is this, March, April, May, June, July, August?
I was planning on.
I mean, typically it was in November, so, yeah, we've got six months.
Yeah. We got a little bit of time, but not much, I, I was planning on reaching out to a few people, um, and if anybody is interested who's watching this, please message us, um.
Yeah, right.
When you say reach out, are you talking about previous vendors?
Previous vendors, I mean, there's been plenty of, everybody's doing a festival in downtown now, it's great, you know, it's like, we started something, and now people are really taking the, the mantle and doing things, and there's all kinds of cool things going on, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of food stuff. Yeah.
If anybody out there is watching who has done a thing downtown and wants to do the Fall Harvest, let us know, message us, um, and we'll try to reach out to you as well, but, um.
And you're saying message?
On the message board.
Okay, Kingsbury.
The Kingsbury message board, yeah, the city of Kingsbury.
Or contact us on the website, yeah.
Or you can reach out to me at info@habitablespaces.org, or.
That's, that's good.
The different ways of, especially since you have the information.
There's a contact page on the website.
Yeah.
To, um.
Yeah, so.
On the city website, you mean?
Yeah, on the city website.
City website, and, and we'll try to brainstorm and, and personally harangue people, cause I mean, I think it is, it is fun, it is satisfying, I think there's an, uh, an opportunity to make money. At least to pay yourself for all the hardship, um, and, you know, it's giving back to your community, so hopefully somebody will step up to the plate.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, we'll need to, to kind of brainstorm in the next, like I said, next weeks or very soon coming months and, and try and. And see if we get any responses and feedback.
Is T G A A checklist?
Um, I forgot to do check report, sorry about that, if we can take a step back. Nothing, nothing too, uh, surprising on here, uh, we got franchise fees from G B E C. Uh, we did get, um, there was a couple of expenses to Amazon for microphones and some hanging folders and sheet protectors. And we did get a, um, a sales tax, the, which is now kind of, after that seven, seventy-five hundred dollar one, we're back to about what's normal.
You did, you were looking into that?
No.
Okay.
Thirty-six, seventy-one, thirty-two.
Sorry.
Excuse me?
You were looking into why the big one, did you find a reason?
No, it's, it, you know, I did get, I did get a response when I was, um, requesting information on that, um, and it's a further detailed. Uh, request on that to get that kind of information, it's kind of protected information, so, but we can get it, but I didn't, I didn't go any further.
I'm sorry, just because that was what, last week?
Yeah. Um, yeah, and so, one of the things we had talked about earlier was a four hundred dollar check to Crystal Clear for the meter, and as you can see, it has not gone through. So, that was written on February twenty-seventh, um, so, again, another reason to contact them and make sure that.
They're.
We're good, we're good there, and they're not gonna like disconnect and charge us a reconnection fee as opposed to just a transfer fee.
As I said, to me, they said two months, in arrears on when they build, so I'm still getting the bill.
Okay. You are?
Yes.
Okay, I definitely need to get back with these people, cause I went, I did the whole, I did all the paperwork, the easement, the transfer, the meter number, paid them the money, did the whole thing. And.
He's, you're still paying for your water use, no, you're, you're done.
Entire.
Yeah, I'll get with, I'll get with them, so.
Oh, okay, well, then why they, if they're two months, well, we.
It's two months at least.
We're not two months there already.
No.
Correct, so.
I did February twenty-seventh, that's when I.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's the explanation I got, two months behind, pretty sure it was Crystal Clear that said that, not G B E C, because each one is actually.
Okay.
Well.
I, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
I'll contact them.
I mean, with G B E C, so long the deposit thing, it's not a question.
I know, when I pay my monthly bills for G B E C, uh, quite, yeah. Crystal Clear, um, then the day I pay it, they send me, oh, here's next month's statement, but I won't pay that for another month after that, so, I don't know.
Since I don't do it online, I get the paper, I don't get it that quick, you know, when I get it once a month, but when I called them.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And because of still being on, or on that meter, even though the transfer's taking place, cause my understanding was when, under real estate transition, trans. Used to, you took your meter with you, that's not been true for some time, so the meter automatically goes to the purchaser, but then in the billing, oh, Lord, I. Thank you, Lord. But I got the explanation why I called them, but yes, I do still get the bill, and yes, it's, it's.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I mean, I did the, I went through the whole transfer process, but I don't know if it took, apparently, maybe it didn't take.
And I told you I would pay it since I was still gonna be there. Well.
Well, I'll find out, I'll find out.
Because, yeah, okay, that's. With other people that have renters on their property, the owner of the property.
But there's two meters, so we're only doing the one.
Even with two meters, the owner of the property becomes liable, that.
Well, we, I went through the whole thing with that one, who owns what meter, so.
Yeah, we don't go through all that.
I'm not worried, they do all work out.
Thank you, I'm still getting the bill, I'm still paying it, and don't be excited or.
Yeah, and I had not realized that it wasn't, until I realized today that the check had not been cashed yet, so.
That might.
So, so, all right, item number seven, discuss and consider Kingsbury's tenth anniversary of incorporation, May nineteenth.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah.
Party!
Yeah, I just, I put this on the agenda because it's coming up pretty quick now and.
It's also our, uh, our city commission meeting that night.
Really?
It's, it's a Monday, I just looked at it, it's the third Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's third Monday.
Oh!
Yeah, so.
Come on, you're so, wait a minute.
No, we can't do that here, we gotta go down to our new establishment.
We need to do it at our new, maybe we have a meeting and a party down there or something.
Anniversary of incorporation, twenty-fifteen.
A few ice chests of beer and just we'll talk until the moon goes down.
That's right. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Um, so.
I'm down.
I probably will be.
I mean, in years past, we've had a little something, something, you know, um.
Birthday cake.
Yeah, it was, that's, that's a pretty metro we had, yeah.
Birthday cake in New York. At the City Hall. In whatever state it's in.
Yeah. Um.
So, is it like, meeting, party then meeting, or meeting then party?
Yeah, that's right, it's on a Monday.
A party, a meeting.
I think we have a s- a, an abbreviated, we try to keep it succinct, really short, and then a party.
Oh, yeah, that's surely not to be here.
Oh.
I'm kidding. I am teasing you, I'm really kidding.
Well, there's a lot of things that appear again and again, and maybe we can take a couple of months to hone it down to like five items.
They're short enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe people will actually come to our meeting, we promised them a party afterwards.
Cake.
Or they'll just show up after.
Does it still at six-thirty, or any, any, any changes about timing, I don't know, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there.
Um.
School's already out, right?
I don't know.
School's not out, so.
May, I do.
I think we could do a six-thirty meeting that we try to cut short at seven-thirty, and then by eight, we're cutting cake and celebrating and having a little neighborhood party.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sunsets will be real late by then.
Yeah, that's true.
Longer days.
Yeah.
That's why I thought maybe you'd make meeting earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, cool.
Oh, make the meeting in.
It is longer days at that.
Yeah, we could, do you wanna try meeting earlier at six, just so we can still have some sunlight, or?
I mean. I wouldn't be surprised if the sun sets at like eight at that point.
I think it probably does, I would think so.
Let's take thirty, seven-thirty, you're okay. Six thirty, seven thirty, you're okay.
Okay, I'm down, sounds like fun. Yay, ten years!
Not right now, but when the meeting's over, you're welcome to hit the sites.
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking to the camera.
That's the back of his head.
All right, item, all right, item number eight, discuss and consider emergency planning and resources. And um, I did uh, quite a bit on emergency response plans, um, and a lot of what I, I put something together and I didn't put it on the message board yet, um. Uh, cause I kinda wanted to just kinda give you a kinda rundown where, where I'm going. And one of the things that is a real common item is called a SCIRP, which is a small community emergency response plan. And it's basically a flip book, so if there's wildfire, here's, here's the response plan. And so I put together, um, here's the items that can be in a, in a response plan or in a disaster, emergency response plan. Um, a lot, you know, some of it just really doesn't apply, you know, um, but I left it in there as, you know, food for thought. Um, and then I went through at least the top three potential disasters uh, for us, which would be wildfires, um, flooding. All we have is low, you know, uh, low level flooding and severe storms slash tornadoes. Um, I made a list of other potential, I think there, and then also contact lists, so here's all, here's the number for hazmat. Here's the number for Union, but say there's a grass fire that's going to the railroad. Um, uh, here's, you know, and so here's the uh, information on uh, the crossings. Um, the DOT numbers, which is if you do call Union Pacific, that is what they need. So here's the crossings, here's the DOT number, there's for anybody that wants. And um, so again, I just did kind of the top three. Um, and what else, the only items I put in there is the areas and population at risk, so for instance wildfire. So all areas in and around Kingsbury, I don't think there's any area in Kingsbury that, that would not be affected by wildfire. Um, a map, so for like flooding, uh, areas to consider for flooding, that, that could, yes, we could. That could definitely be, for wildfires, it's pretty much the whole area. Um, system for issuing warnings and alerts, I thought this might be something good. Um, Kingsbury, Texas, uh, the Kingsbury website, if there's something, we can certainly put there. Uh, social media, and, and the, you know, just another uh, point of information at far, as far wildfires, is the Texas State Forest Service Incident Viewer. Which I've been watching a lot lately, because there's that nice big fire going on in Fredericksburg, and you can see how much it's contained.
Austin, too.
Yeah, how much it's burned so far, and so it's, it's just a point of information. What I did was also on the website, just for now, just to kind of put it out there. I did add, under government, I added emergency response page. Um, so you can go to that and it says basically, under development, our plan, I mean, we can certainly post the plan. I can remove the whole page, but I was like, okay, as I'm thinking through. And then it does have, um, like the Kingsbury Facebook and the, uh, the, the wildfire response. Um, one thing that I'm trying to find some more information on is like, we were, we weren't actually under red flag warning, it was everything uh, west. Was under a red flag warning. Um, I did post in the newsletter, like if there, if you're gonna have a fire, it has to be between six and twenty-three miles per hour, anything over twenty-three. You know, then it's basically red flag time. But I don't know yet of a way to get, you know, a red flag alert type warning.
I wonder if we could do a little weather station at the new city hall, they're, they're not that.
I don't.
Well, but how would we get it out?
Yeah.
But we don't designate red flags, right, the county does, or?
Uh, the, no, NOAA.
NOAA does.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that doesn't exist anymore, does it?
Well, you know, yeah.
Does. Um, and I believe the county can also issue a red flag, a red flag warning by the county. So I'm finding out a little bit more information about the red flag, just because it's been coming up lady with, lace lately with the winds that we've been having. And the wildfires that we've been having, so I'm trying to find out a little bit more information on, uh, on what, on uh, red flag warnings. Um, evacuation routes, that's really not applicable, I mean, away from the fire. Uh, evacuation shelters, not applicable, we don't really have a shelter and you never know if there's a fire near the shelter. Um, so emergency contact list, so of course nine-one-one. The Kingsbury VFD through, and I put here through the nine-one-one dispatch. Uh, Guadalupe County Fire and Rescue, we're also through nine-one-one dispatch. Um, Guadalupe County Emergency Management, and also Union Pacific, if fire threatens railroad. And then, um, at some point, yeah, contact information, so. I don't have the numbers here, because the numbers are here, so Guadalupe County Emergency Services, Union Pacific, here's the information on the four crossings that I think are pertinent, I mean, I thought about shaking maybe, but um, it was, the two crossings in town, Gander Slu and Woodrow Center, those are all in the city limits, so, so, um.
One of the first things I noticed in, in your booklet was a map, and but phone numbers as well, because you have a city hall, I think it would be really nice to have it literally posted.
Yeah, and I've ordered a flip book, which is a, which is what most of these SCIRPs are in, is a kind of a flip book, so it'll like have a red tab and says wildfires, you pull it up and here's the information you need to know about wildfires. But, I mean, certainly something that we can have in a binder, you know.
By the way, Jessica, the wind took away the notice, I found it back here.
That wind is wreak havoc.
Yeah, I saw that it was so easy to do, but I guess because of you thinking.
Yes. We don't have really any, there's no DOT on that, it's just a private, there's three or four.
You know what I noticed now, or lately, I noticed before they didn't do it, but now I noticed that they break the train when they're blocking those private crossings down here, mm-hmm, when they're stopped, they separate and open it up.
We've requested that umpteen times.
I saw, I saw it twice now, so.
Um, so, these are the ones that I could think of, uh, and then re- and then a recover, I thought, well, it would not be bad to have on here, once the disaster has, has run its course, and here's recovery contact. Contact list, so here's the numbers for FEMA, uh, number for Red Cross, GLO is the Gen- Texas General Land Office. Um, they, they are, it's a how to register and find disaster recovery centers. You know, so, and the Texas Department of Emergency Management, so. And then I did similar for um, flooding and severe storms and tornadoes. So, uh, and low water crossings, here's the ones that I know of.
Yeah, obvious.
Um, Pearlie Road, there's several on Wilkie Road, there's several on Kingsbury Road. Uh, there's Cottonwood Creek at York Creek, which is not in our city limits, however, it is, yeah, it is. Um, Jones Road at Brushy Creek, which is in our city limits, um, LaMalle Road is not.
But it's.
But it's, you know, um, and then also on flooding, I have, uh, believe oh, somewhat, yes, so nine-one-one, and then also Guadalupe County Road and Bridge, because Road and Bridge is the one that puts out the barricades, so that's why I added them there.
You know, I was thinking on Oilfield Road at San Marcus River, they barricaded it, because I don't know if it actually coughed the bridge, but it came really close.
Oilfield Road?
Well, that's Oilfield and San Marcus River, but the county had put barricades up.
Oh, Oilfield at the river.
At the river.
Yeah.
But now, Gander Slu, where from Oilfield down to Ninety on Gander Slu. The Luling side, the San Marcus side, a riverside of Gander Slu.
Oh, so Gander.
There's two, two bridges, there's one, uh.
Oh yeah, right, just before the.
Just before, uh, where, um, uh, Puli Road comes out again on Gander Slu.
Right.
And then there's another one, uh, before the railroad track, trestle, uh.
Before the trestle?
Yeah, it's about a half a mile, oh, it's just past Woodrow Center.
Yep.
And G- uh, Gander Slu on the east side. But that, I don't think, I've never seen either one of those ever flood, those uh, bridges there. Even when San Marcus was up and flooding, I think we're still going to Luling through those, over those two bridges, so it's not a big concern. Under the trestle now, they have excavated that out and changed the contour of the land. And I haven't seen any water collect, but we haven't had a big rainstorm, so I don't.
I, I kinda thought about trestle, but then I thought, well, I mean, just a couple hundred yards down is, is a, you're, are you talking about the?
At the, on the Gander Slu paved road underneath that railroad trestle, just before night, before the cemetery there.
Okay.
It used to flood, but it's like.
Did it really?
Yeah, when good rain, it would, you know, come up to your axles. You know, if you went through it fast.
There's also the trestle that goes down.
Trestle Road, yeah, that's, I don't even try that.
Okay, yeah.
It's always got waters.
Yeah, you'll bottom out on that sometimes.
But no, it used to flood, when it rained hard, it would flood to where it's like, Janet wouldn't go through it, cause it might float a car.
These would be areas to mark, so for flooding, yeah, definitely map needed for flooding, and so these would be areas to mark.
Places, I know they're there, but I don't really know where they are, but there's several places.
Oh, well.
They go underwater.
Yeah, there's a lot of place, I put several on Wilkie.
Place on Gander Slu that goes underwater, uh, right, just right before Woodrow Center, on this side.
On this side, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, do you wanna do, make a handout for people, or just have it available on?
Build a map?
Yeah.
Get a map that we can, we can mark and label on, just our own person, our own personal city map, and just ask people. Can you show me on the map where it floods, you know, you live on Woodley Road, it floods, right, yeah, where, show me where.
So I think, I think it kinda covers, you know, the emergency response.
This is a great share.
Oh, okay, and then so the other, and then on the last, there is, um, other types, so hazardous materials incidents, due to train and or trucks carrying hazardous trucks S. Gathering hazardous material, a severe train accident, a severe vehicle accident, cyber attack. That is considered a, can be considered a disaster, uh, assault to the public, you know. Someone rams a truck into the festival.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, uh, yeah, I don't know.
Like, I know.
I'm just, I'm putting.
What about a mule going crazy and running?
Yeah. Mule stampede.
Yes, mules, mules running over people and, yes. Um, and then the ones that are more longer term, extreme heat, extreme cold, and drought, so.
We really need to put mule stampede on that.
Mule stampede, we did have a mule stampede.
It could happen again.
We did have a mule stampede, so, um. So, uh, yeah, but I, to me, the top three are wildfires.
Yeah.
Flooding and, and severe storms slash tornadoes, so, um. Yeah, so I think we can take these and flesh them out and flesh out the others, and maybe we'll put it on the website, I put it up there just to kind of yeah, maybe, maybe that's, you know, maybe when we have red flag warnings, or maybe we just leave that on Facebook, because that's more you know, where people get notified of things more often, and then find out more about how to get notified of something like a red flag warning. Um.
I mean, I guess you could put it on the discussion board, it, it does sound like there are people out there getting, uh, getting notifications about that.
That's true.
Getting information to people is the hardest thing in the world.
It is the hardest thing, yeah.
You know, but I like, like, the map with the low water crossings, I like that, because people move out here, have no clue that that road is gonna flood. And they'll just run through it like, like business and float off down the creek.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but at least, we can say, well, we told you, it's right here, free to discover, you know.
Right. Um, and then, you know, when, when we have a, you know, a message board there at seventy-five, seventy-one, we could also put up, you know, you know, burn banned effects. Red flag warnings, whatever, you know.
I can see our board getting big now.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's alright, that's okay.
So, okay, so it seems like we're on the, on the right track there?
Yes, great work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very, very nice.
Okay. So we'll just continue to flesh that out, and then I'll, I'll go ahead and put it on the message board, I just thought I'd kinda run over it first, and then we can put it out there and kind of flesh it out. All right, item number nine, discuss and consider Texas Government Accountability Association Checklist.
Um, well, you know, I think, uh, Bonnie's come to talk about the audit, and I'm sure she would like to get her portion of things done.
Put her on the camera, put her in the spot.
There she is, she's back there.
So of course, one of the things on the checklist, um, is performing an audit. Which Kingsbury, like many small towns, uh, are certainly willing to perform an audit if someone comes up with the money for it, because it takes up, uh, a year's worth of our particular income. So, uh, uh, and I did get a call the other day, just, uh, from a gentleman asking about TGAA, uh, regarding Pilot Point, Texas. Which is up north, uh, I think near Dallas somewhere.
No idea.
Um, asking about TGAA and about, they were looking through and says it seems to be easier to get in than get out of, and I said, that is something we did talk about because of the audit consideration. And, uh, that, you know, if, if we're gonna have to spend tens of thousands of dollars or thousands of dollars on an audit, that, you know, is not benefiting, um, us in any way, then you know, it's not, uh, it may be, you know, a reason to go through the process to exit TGA, which is you know, a, it's a lot harder to get out of than into, and so that, so this, um, up at Pilot Point, they're, they're looking at it and wondering about that, and so we did talk about audits at the time. And I said, I think we have found somebody that is willing, uh, to, to help us maybe in that area, which is where Bonnie comes into play. So, did you want?
Yeah, I definitely would wanna ask some questions and, you know, see, uh, I spoke a little bit with Allison, and then I got a message from Jessica. So I think the important thing is to know, first of all, in all honesty, is what your deadline is. Um, you know, if you're saying you want it done by April fifteenth, you know, that's, that's really short. And I, that I cannot do, I will be honest with you.
Is there a timeframe in TG, in the TGAA? They haven't given me any timeframes. So I don't think we're looking at a specific deadline at this point, um.
And I would wanna know, first of all, like, how are your books kept, do you have receipts, do you have invoices to show things of your spending, um, I would have to know, you know, like, how many transactions are you talking? Um, is the audit for the fiscal year, the calendar year, for more than one year? What are your expectations, like, what's the reason for your audit, is it for this TGAA, or is it just personally because you want to have Kingsbury accountable and in compliance within the residence? Or is it for insurance, a lot of times your insurance will require an audit.
It's a statute, it's a law to, to require. And you can't have the same company or person for over three years in a row do it, and there's, there's a lot of requirements. Um, and we've contacted a number of people, but, um, it's costly. And, uh, so, and we're not, you know, willing to, to spend people's money.
Minimum five to seven thousand, easy, if you could go outside, you know.
Right, exactly.
And that, that's something else, um.
But it's a, it's a, it's a requirement by law, and then with TGAA, one of the items on their checklist has to do with an audit. So, we're trying to comply, but we're very reluctant to comply if it's going to take a significant percentage of the income of the city in order to comply.
I wanna mention too, I, I wish I remembered the details, I saw something on one of those TML emails uh, about maybe a bill, uh, that would, um, something about if a city isn't doing their annual, uh, audit, that they wouldn't be uh, eligible for grants and stuff through the state, um.
Well, one of the, uh, Grantworks, one of their items that they brought up was an audit, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an audit, so.
So, and that's my other question, because even though I worked for the IRS fifteen years, and I did audits, and I've done it for other businesses. I don't have any type of certification.
Right.
So that I would need to make clear.
There's not, there's no requirement for certification. No, it just can't be one of us.
Right.
Is pretty much it.
Right, like I can't do the fire department. Right, like, I can't do the fire department, I'm not able to do the fire department.
Right.
Right, because you're an officer, yes.
Treasure for the fire department, so that isn't.
Yes.
Get one of them to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right, but I do like, I do have other businesses, um, like through the church and things, other organizations, so, um, you know, I guess, in fairness to all of us, or to, to the city and myself, I would wanna see, um, the books, and just kinda see how the records are kept.
It's all on, it's all electronic.
Okay.
And I would think it would be for the fiscal year, which is October first through September thirtieth.
Right, that's how we run, yes.
Yes, and, um, I don't think we need to go back any years, I, I would think so, October first, twenty twenty-fourth, you know? Um, yes, we do have receipts, uh, little haphazard sometimes, but we can get them, uh, and so we can certainly, uh, uh, provide you what, what, I think, whatever you need, but yeah, everything is, um, online, so it's, um, visible to, I think Jessica and I.
I've been putting out these monthly check reports.
Yeah, monthly check reports.
At least for the last couple months, uh.
Well, we've been doing these for years, but, uh.
For years, yeah.
Yeah.
But I've started posting them not too long ago.
Posting these, yeah.
We've got years worth.
Which, and that would work for me, if we, you know, decide that's what we're gonna do, if I have even the paper copy. Um, is it something also that you want someone else to be there with me while I'm doing the audit? Is it something that, because like some of the organizations, they have someone from their organization there with me? Or is it something that, um, you're comfortable if I do it on my own?
I, I would like to be there, but I'm definitely comfortable if you do, but I, I think it would be helpful to have someone there that could answer questions and, and fess up when, yeah, I don't have that receipt from Taco Cabana for, for, uh, the trail ride, although I think I do in my purse. So, uh, like I said, sometimes it was haphazard, but, uh, yeah, so, I mean, it would be good to have someone there, but at least part of the time, maybe, but I would certainly not require you to not touch anything until somebody was there watching, you know, I don't think, I don't think we're concerned about that.
And approximately, how many transactions do you think you have per month? Like, do you have a lot of bills, or are you minimal?
No, this is pretty much it for a month. Uh.
Not six to ten?
Yeah, it's not, yeah. That's pretty much an average.
Yeah, we, we try not to spend money, that's our Liberty City way.
That's an average. Yeah. Yeah, it's probably less than this, this includes a franchise fee, which is quarterly, so that's not normally on there. Um, we have a couple of city clerk supplies, which is not normally on there, so it's this or less, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, the biggest thing, just in all honesty, um, as Allison and Jane know, we travel a lot, and I'm involved in many ministries and organizations, so if it was April fifteenth, I would just be honest and say.
No, no, I don't think for.
I cannot, yeah, that's, um, that's not gonna happen.
How long, how long do you think it'd be, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Um, honestly, if it's one page, if I really sat down and did it, it's really, as long as I can justify the spending, and, you know, especially your, the audit really and truly, if you do a complete, true audit, you have to have a receipt or invoice for every single item.
Right.
So, for me to sign off as an audit, I would want to have, especially your utilities, your big bills. As Shirley said, you know, you went to Taco Cabana, and you have a three dollar item, or whatever, you know, sometimes that happens.
Like, a hundred and fifty dollar.
Or a hundred, well, that's a little.
It was the, it was, it was.
Right, right.
But you justify, explain, explanation of.
And if I understand right.
Right.
It's an annual audit, not a monthly.
I mean, IRS, I said a handwritten.
Right, but even at an, an annual audit, you still have to be able to be accountable for all your expenditures,
My, 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 random.
Right, and my, my, right, right.
And see, like, you know, as long as you're, um, balancing, like, are you balancing to the bank when you do this report? Is this?
I mean, Shirley does.
I'm balancing to the bank, yes, this is equal to the bank balance, and, uh, also against our budget. So, what our budget amount was, and here's what our actuals are, so, uh, the number here is based upon those amounts, and if there's any discrepancy in the totals, it will give me a, it say, okay, here, you're off by this much, you know? So I wanna make sure that everything that's recorded as an actual is also in the check report, um, in one of these three a- accounts, so.
But as far as how, when it, the audit occurs, or how long, uh, to, uh, turn in the result, aren't you asking for an audit from October first of twenty-four to go through September thirty of this year? Or are you talking about, uh, and if so, that audit is gonna be done in?
Oh, you know, right, right, we're. Yeah, I guess it's been a year before, you're correct, yeah.
You want it fall in four, don't you?
So, I think you have.
But you're, it's already closed first.
Yeah, oh, so you want one that's closed up, but so you wanna do October, uh,
Twenty-three, four.
October one of twenty-three to September thirty of October of, uh, twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
That's what you want, okay, okay, so.
So those reports would be finished, and they would be closed out, because depending on when y'all file for your taxes,
They're just, yeah.
whether you're doing it fiscal or calendar year, also, obviously depending on.
Right, we don't, we don't, yeah, as a municipality, we don't owe income taxes, so.
But you have to at least file?
No.
You don't even have to file?
Uh, only.
Two, seven, thirteen.
We, we do the deductions for that, yeah, and payments.
Those are TEC reports, uh, but not IRS, aren't, well, oh, that's right, no, we, we make payments to the IRS for our, our stuff, uh.
We have receipts for that.
Of the employee compensation.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, so, in, uh, we had a hundred and sixty-seven transactions in twenty twenty-three fiscal year. We're not, we're not prolific.
Right.
It's bonus.
Spenders, and that includes, yeah, that includes debits and credits. So what is that about every other day? That sounds like a lot for us, actually.
Does.
I think so, yeah. I guess maybe a lot of the purchases happen all at once.
Yeah, and then there's also the payments, the, the fiscal, the taxes and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Elon Musk eye on this, let's see, let's see what's going on.
So, um, just if I understand, you would want an audit on all three accounts, is that correct?
Uh.
Are you talking just the checking, or the general and subaccount?
I would think only on the checking account, the other accounts are in Texas class,
Okay.
which is a liquid asset, uh, uh, management.
And they're going through the other account first, right?
Well, yeah, but that's re- regulated by Texas, right? That's standard approval, it's okay to use it, we don't have.
Correct, yeah, it's not a, it's not a checking account, yeah.
Yeah, you know. It's not an audit now, I mean.
I don't know, I mean, it wouldn't hurt, I guess, but.
I mean, it's fine, if you're just wanting the checking account, that's fine, I just wanna make sure I understand
Yeah.
what your expectations are, and you know, what you're.
I think just the checking.
What you're looking for, um, you know?
Because if, all right, to make the house payment, we'd move it from here to the checking account, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's okay, so, yeah.
Do we need to check with T- TGAA and make sure that they don't wanna see?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't think so, we give them what we got and see what they say, and if they're unhappy, then we'll talk about it, or Jessica will talk to them about it.
Yeah, if they more, more than what the state law requires, which is sort of why.
The impression I have from talking to that, what's his name?
Anthony.
Anthony, they're, they're just like, somebody sitting here going like, you know, that's what the law says, you know, really shouldn't do that, or this is, this looks better than just, you know, not necessarily, but it looks better.
Law interpretation is, yeah.
It's not, it's not a bad thing, it's not a bad thing, it's just like having somebody looking over your shoulder saying, you know, I don't want you to burn your hand, but if you touch that, it's hot, you know, and so, huh.
But do we have, uh, QuickBooks, uh, profit and loss statement, uh, generated?
We don't, we can't make a profit, as I mean, it's probably, we're not allowed to.
Or that, I, the, I mean, by, by that is just an income statement, uh, because if we did, that's probably what TJ, TGAA wants an audit on the, uh, on the account, which is on your general account.
Uh-huh.
Would, is that correct, Bonnie? You, you, you're often looking at, at an audit for an organization, more than just a checking account, you're auditing, uh, uh, profit and loss statements, and, uh, or income statements.
Sometimes, it depends on the organization, from what I've dealt with, it kinda depends.
I don't think we have that detailed here.
Right, and.
Anthony was saying, you know, we're not, we're not dealing with these huge grants, and these big distributions of money and projects,
Right. Right.
You know, so it's like, we're not in the same league, we're not that kind of audit, but still, the state law doesn't specify that.
Right.
It's that their, um, their departments may have evolved into going like, well, this should be, but that's not what the law is, this is their regulation. Don't know.
Yeah, and it looks like most of your expenditures really are like utilities, or office supplies, and I don't really see like a lot of out of the ordinary things, you know, so.
No, we have like National Night Out, where we do have some expenditures, we have the trail ride,
The trail ride convention.
where we have some expenditures.
Fall harvest.
Fall harvest, where we have like a couple of expenditures, other than that.
Well, we've never had utilities before, right?
Yeah, we pay for the street light.
Oh, right, oh, right.
Yeah, so we've had utilities all along, um.
And I think as, as a city, you would expect to have some expenditures, you know, obviously, you're gonna have utility or maybe phone.
There's some, sometimes we do have, uh, road maintenance, mowing, um, uh, we had a, we had a sinkhole.
Yeah.
That we had to have repaired, um, uh, so, very, you know, there are some expenditures, but,
Don't wanna know about those.
but not, not much in the way of, uh, anything, babe.
And, and the way I would handle it, honestly, first of all, I would start, um, with your expenditures, and invoices, and receipts, and so forth, just to make sure that we can account for whatever it is that the city is doing, and, um, you know, as long as you're balancing to the bank, I don't really need to see that, if you're balancing, I don't think I, I mean, I, I can, but.
We can download all the transactions.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if I have had something like this, you know, and then.
I can, I can print that out for you, and I can download the transactions and print that out for you,
The paperwork and stuff.
all of our transactions during that timeframe, and what kind of, of fee are you looking at for performing an audit for us?
Yeah, what, what are you looking?
Good question.
Um, I mean, in all honesty, um, I don't mind helping the city, um, it would be, it would be still time, but I don't expect to, um, you know, I'm not trying to rip anybody off, so I, I would wanna be fair, I would.
We don't know what's fair.
Be fair to yourself, be fair to us.
Right, 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 um, if this is what it entails for most of the months,
Right.
and you have the paperwork, and it's not like I have to go scrounging or looking or something, I feel like, you know, it'd be, um, pretty, I'll say pretty easy, because y'all have kept really good records. Um, I don't know, I hate to.
I mean, you can say this, I don't wanna put you on the spot either.
I'll tell you what, what we, we, we budgeted.
Here's a spread.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty dollars. That may be like ridiculously low, I don't know, we, cause we, we didn't have a really place to start for that, so we did, you know, because we're like, well, all we need is someone who's willing to do the math, and, and we'll check on it.
Right, right, right.
So, we had audited, we had budgeted two hundred and fifty, um, but we can certainly, you know, talk about what you would consider fair.
We pulled that two fifty out of thin air, didn't we?
We pulled, we just wrote it on the, yeah.
Put in a number.
Wrote it on the sheet.
How's the budget?
Someone suggested it?
Yeah. What do you, what, so what were you thinking? I shouldn't have thrown that out there until you said something, but just wanna let you know that, because we, we really didn't have, we knew we weren't gonna pay thousands of dollars, that's it, so we just wanted to make sure we paid somebody.
Right. Right.
You know?
Yeah, well, and, um, I will be honest with you, that is very low, compared to what most, like, uh, usually it's a minimal two thousand,
Okay. Hmm.
but that's, I know high for the city, I'm a resident of Kingsbury, so I would want to do, you know, be fair, and kind of, I guess, part of it donate, um, I was, depending on, on this, and if it really did not take as long, then I would probably, I was thinking five hundred, to be honest with you. Um, because if, again, if I have all the months, if we're doing twelve months, depending on how long it takes, if it doesn't take that long, then, um, um, honestly, I would, you know, possibly take off a bit, you know, of the fee.
Oh, no, it's not just the fee, but come under the fee because of the.
Right, if I say, you know what, gosh, I've already got this done, and it went a lot quicker, um, like I said, y'all seem to have everything in order, but, you know, are you gonna hand me a shoebox and say, here's a year's receipts?
No, 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 no.
You know what I'm saying? I'm just going by past experience, I've had, you know, this looks great, because you printed it,
Right.
but are you gonna hand me a shoebox of a year's supply of receipts?
Right.
That's different than if you say, okay, here, Bon, here's your, you know, this is for the months, you know, we have it pretty much in order. So, I mean, that's, that's being honest, it depends on how much is in order, it depends how long it takes, um, and, and that's, that's really reason, I'll just say, it's pretty reasonable, that's, and I know for the city.
I, it sounds reasonable to me.
You know, because honestly, um, most people would not even start it, um,
Under, yeah.
under twenty-five, three, twenty-five, under three thousand, and I'll be very honest with you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even the small organizations, you, you can't get an audit for a whole year for under really three, three to five thousand is probably more.
Yeah. And see, that's a. That's a month's worth of our income, so that's why we've been very, if people want us to do an audit, that's fine, they can pay for it,
Yeah.
And I understand.
Corrected.
and we'll do it.
Right, and I understand that, and I, and I will be more than fair, um, I will be honest, if I say, you know what, I, I know this next few weeks, like I said, I will not be able to focus on it.
Right, right.
And when I, anyone that knows me knows, when I do something, I wanna do it a hundred and ten percent, and I have, um, some things going on, so I wanna be able to sit down and really work on it, so it would not be for the next few weeks, so that has to be understood.
Mm-hmm. Like I said, I don't think there's any kind of deadline that.
And if you're doing already the year that's closed out, um, you've already filed your, well, you said you don't have to file taxes, so that's not an issue, but, um, you know?
It's all there.
As a resident of Kingsbury, I, I don't mind, um, you know, donating some of my time, and if it turns out to be that it's, you know, not that much, or depending on how your books are, your receipts and everything, you know, we can always reevaluate, but if, if that's not a good number for y'all, there are no hard feelings with me, no.
If what's not a good number?
Five hundred.
I, so good.
And you would have, and if it is a total mess, you would have a problem going, say, no, I need five hun, I need a thousand. Cause, could you do that? If it's a total mess, if it's taking up all your time?
Well, sure.
You wouldn't hesitate?
I would be honest with y'all, I mean, I think I know most of y'all pretty well, um, and that, I would be honest.
Okay, alright. And I have one more question about receipts, what do you want receipts on, I mean, what do you want a receipt for? Our electric payments, our gas?
If you do a true audit, you really have to have an invoice or receipt for every item that's listed on your checking.
We do that, sort of, they're already okay.
Well, I don't know, going back through twenty twenty-three, we'll have to.
Print some out, find out on the internet.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there's, there's things like, uh.
Because electronic.
You make, we make payments to the city of Seguin for, uh, ambu- ambulance service.
Uh, ambulance service.
And that's under a contract, I don't think we get a, a paper bill.
No, we do.
You would have, you should have an invoice, you should have an invoice.
Oh, we did, you actually, so, so they'll be invoiced.
Yeah, we do have, uh.
But are you gonna, are you gonna want to see your contracts?
Yeah. So here's T B C.
I just need an invoice that has the amount on it.
Okay. Okay.
Controller.
I was just thinking of things, but that's, that's what you're talking about, is every time we write a check, was there something, do we have something that says why?
Yeah. Seguin.
Yeah, do you actually have your records filed, or do you throw them in the trash can and then you got it?
Right, right. Like, when I do the, the fire department, every check that I write or every time I use the debit card, if someone comes to me and says, Bon, why did you buy this from Amazon? We bought fire blankets and it was four hundred and seventy-five dollars, here's my invoice.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's just to keep you honest, and it's also to let the residents of Kingsbury know that you can account for every single dime you spend. Most people, ninety-nine percent of the residents, I don't think are going to question, but you will always have.
Yeah.
Someone.
Someone, and it's with the fire department, it's with the other organizations that I've done an audit on, people will come in and request an audit, which they have the right to do, they can, especially if they're nonprofit and so forth, they can come in and request an audit. And you have to do that, or you can risk not being in compliance.
If, if that one person didn't look at it and ask a question, money would disappear and over this, you know, it just would.
Right. And, and I think, honestly, um, I commend y'all for doing the audit because even like with the fire department, you know, I want somebody to check my work, I do, I'm fine with it. And I think for, for y'all, even though you don't have a lot of transactions, um, compared to the fire department or some of the other organizations that I'm doing, it's, um. It's still a good idea, that you can say, yes, we were audited and we can account for every dollar. And if, you know, you're going back to twenty twenty-three, if you have certain things, you know, online, that's fine, that's why I would have to be working with.
Yeah, certainly all of our, what we call our technology costs, you know, the cost of, of emails and websites and domains, yeah, that's all online.
Right.
Amazon purchases, you know, is online, so, but we certainly have the receipts for all of that.
Right. Right, and I don't have to have the paper. Right, I don't have to have, but that's what I want you to understand, I don't have to have a physical piece of paper.
Okay.
If you can show me online, here's, here's the confirmation.
If there's the ability to track it.
Right, right, if you can say, here, Bon, this was from the Amazon, look, it's right there as a confirmation, check.
Yeah, those are the easy ones.
Absolutely.
The Taco Cabana at the bottom of first.
That's a little more difficult.
Yeah, I may still have the twenty twenty-three one down at the bottom of my.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, I may.
Sure.
That we make this deal happen.
We make this deal happen.
Make this deal happen.
Uh.
I mean, without, you can explain more than I can, better, yeah.
So.
If Bonnie's good with it.
So we have. This, okay, so this is regarding the Texas Government Accountability Association checklist, which we're discussing the point of an audit requirement there. So, we have a motion to accept a, an audit from Bonnie, I'm trying to think, uh, Bonnie and Greg.
Devorak.
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 I was gonna say Devorjak, but that is.
Devorak, to do our audit for a baseline of five hundred dollars.
Minimum.
In order, yeah.
Minimum, yeah.
Minimum.
Yeah.
Determine, she'll determine the final cost, depend on how everything turns out.
Okay.
And that's, I'm trusting, I'm trusting.
Alright, um, uh, so, yeah, we have on here permission vote for approval and or action, so.
Well, I'll second that.
Alright, so the motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion on this?
I'd like to know your input on the discussion, is this a good deal for you, we're gonna work?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, um, like I said, I'm tr- I'm really and truly trying to be fair to y'all, for the city of Kingsbury, um. And so, I mean, I'm comfortable with it, is it, as you know, it's not a much real big moneymaker, cause the amount of time it'll take, I'm not doing it for the money, I'm just doing it really more as a service, honestly, to the city of Kingsbury.
And thank you, I appreciate it, and I'm aware of that, we will make it, um, but yes, ma'am.
And what I can do is I can print out, oh, so, uh, and, and we'll. Provide you with the information regarding, um, all the transactions that occurred during the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And all the, um, account transactions that occurred during that time, and our. The receipts, that, that, uh, we'll make our best effort.
We'll work, we'll work together.
Yes, I mean, you know, we get, we get one of these every month regarding ambulance service, we have for years, for ten years.
Is it usually the same number?
We don't have a file of all of our ambulance receipts there, so.
Is it usually the same number every month?
It's the nu- same number every month, same receipt, same.
Alright. I feel like.
Just a different day.
Cause I started here in May of twenty twenty-three, I believe, and, ah, I don't know.
Well.
Uh-huh.
We'll work together.
Can we vote?
Okay, yes, so the most.
On something like that, it's the same account vote, in the same account, you can go to the person and get, um, from them.
Okay. So the motion has been made and, and seconded. If there's any, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed, say no, alright, that motion carries, so.
Huzzah, thank you Bonnie, thank you Bonnie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
We're very lucky to have such talented people in our community.
Okay, and so then, we can go to Grant Works, we can go to T G A A, we can go to whoever in.
Get out, out.
Say that, yes, we.
Let them see.
Have.
Let T G A A see the audit?
Well, we, yeah, we're, we're finished.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most importantly, the people that we work for, the city of Kingsbury, that's why.
That's, oh, yeah.
Well, I mean.
And that's why they.
We never wanted to say, nah, we don't do it, we don't, we, that was never why we had, and we just.
No. It's ridiculously expensive.
It's ridic, it's, yeah.
We're gonna feel a lot better.
I know, just like the C P A's or anyone that's certified, they will, they'll start at minimum five to seven thousand.
Exactly, and that's where, the ones that I've contacted, yes, and the people that were not, uh, uh, certified for municipal audits, didn't want to do it without. And I'm like, all we're looking for is someone that can.
Ballast check.
Yeah, yeah, that's all we're looking for.
And just one little suggestion, depending on how y'all, uh, either like the way I do it, or you don't like it, or whatever, in an effort, if you decide you're going to do an audit for the next year, and if it works out between the city and myself, you can do a six-month audit. And so then, even if your books are not closed out, you would be a little bit ahead, and you would have your six-month audit done.
Mm-hmm. I like that.
So then, when the next six months happen, when you go to close out September thirtieth, then you would say, wow, we're, we're now done with half of this year, so when you go to do your next audit, then you're only going back six months instead of twelve months, so something just to.
I like it, yeah.
That would make the rush period smaller, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but it does work, because then you know, you have all these receipts and you've only, and if you don't, you can look for those receipts and say, okay, now we're caught up until these next six months, and then you kind of know what you need to collect, if you're not. If you're lacking some things, you'll understand what we need to make sure we keep that Taco Cabana receipt, or make sure, you know, yeah.
I remember. Department.
You know, but I mean, seriously, it'll just kind of let you know what it is that you need to do, and for the next audit.
That's true.
Right, and we've certainly, even if I, 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 we've certainly made an effort, you know, when Jessica spends money, uh, that on the, on the, here's the, here's what it was for, so. There's nev- there's not a single item in there that doesn't have the description of what it was for, or what the credit was for. And then, uh, oh, and it, well, and I can say, this is franchise, and then where it fell in the, uh, buzz, budget. So, yeah, we have all that, it's just a matter of.
And that's why I'm, I'm comfortable with it, because it will be work, but not.
Excessive.
Not like some that I'm, I've done, I'll just say that.
Right, right, yeah, we're talking a hundred and sixty-seven transactions.
You did a good job.
Okay, well, I'm the daughter of a mess, you're too.
Yeah, all of y'all done a good job, so, um, if, if that's it, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much for your time, thank you.
Sorry so long.
And thank you for the informative, uh, description of what we need and what it would entail, because we are not, uh, learned on this topic, yeah, we're, we're getting there.
We're new to this.
Not learned.
Yeah, I mean, we'll work together.
Yeah.
I, I want to just make sure that we do it right, but also make sure that it's a service to the city of Kingsbury.
Right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome. I would tell Greg you cannot buy a new car now, I did not get enough, no.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, maybe we could do something under the table for. Alright, on to, thank you Bonnie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item number ten, discuss and consider interlocal agreement on subdivision regulations update, and I'm sad to say, I do still don't have any update on this, this month. But I still want to keep it on the list.
Yeah.
And, yeah, definitely, um, just other items took precedent and I should have made time for it and didn't get time for it this month. Um, item number eleven, discuss and consider Kingsbury City Commission mission and vision statement.
Read, uh, I still have not, nothing to report, no update. Probably because I really wasn't overly enthusiastic about looking for a mission or a vision statement, um, but things just slowly grind through and. And now it's just hitting me with faces, yes, this is what our mission should be, this is my opinion, but at least I'm gonna try to get some discussion started. And, uh, get it up on the message board, and I encourage everybody to discuss that, yes, because I'm sure I will have a different opinion than everybody else in here, and we want to hear them all, we do.
Articulate. Alright.
Somewhere there's, is, is a good answer for everybody.
I can't wait to see what you write.
Oh.
Uh, alright, item number twelve, discuss and consider city clerk absent for June sixteenth commission meeting.
So we're gonna have it on the beach then?
And you have the same, you copied the, uh, description there from previous, so I will.
Oopsie.
Make a note there.
Alright, yeah, I just wanted to bring this up, cause I have this gig, um, in Dallas the morning after the meeting at like seven A M, and so I just didn't think it was possible.
Ooh.
So, um, yeah, uh, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we, I mean, we're certainly within our rights to move the meeting if need be, or. I mean, at one time, we had a deputy city clerk.
See, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, whatever, Cassie, anyway, she was coming to meetings and she stopped.
Um, you know, that was.
It was really.
During, during a, you know, a previous city clerk's, um, um, time, uh, as clerk, so I don't know if that's something that I would have to look back at the ordinance on that, but.
We have to have a clerk though, I think, to have a meeting, don't we?
Hmm, I don't think so, I don't think we do.
By law. Really? Cause when we lost Delta, I remember.
I'm thinking, now that we do it, we have the live video, I think that would serve as our, to, to draft.
Click and.
I'm not sure.
Minutes, I don't know, let me add, would you be, would you be okay if we moved our meeting to a day would suit your schedule?
Yeah.
You'd be okay?
Uh-huh.
Uh. Monday's still a good day, or a, a different week, or a different day of that week?
Oh, every Monday, okay.
The second, the second Monday?
The second Monday.
Certainly not Tuesday night, once you get back from Dallas.
The fourth, yeah, the fourth Monday?
We can move our meeting to Waco.
Right, and, yeah, we'll meet you halfway.
Um, yeah, I could do, um, I could do the week before, the week after, uh, on Monday, um. Oh.
Well, it's not month, next month then.
June, it'd be June ninth or June twenty-third.
No, this is.
That's a long way away.
And this is in three months.
It is.
Think about it for a while, we got a month or two.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, but thank you for bringing it up, so that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, at this point, we can adjourn. Thanks, everybody.